You guys good?
Ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the 1,642nd meeting of the Board of Trustees Metropolitan Sewer District. Do I get a roll call?
Yes, roll call. Mr. Wabi?
Here.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Singer?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
We have a full board.
Do I get approval of the journal of the preceding meeting, January the fourteenth?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. No comments. Report of the board committees. Program management. Mr. Evans, trustee Evans?
Thank you. The program management committee met on February 2nd, 2021 at 7:36 a.m. The meeting was attended by trustees Wilson and Evans, Fair, Singer, and Wabi via online. The minutes of the January 5th, 2021 meeting were approved. The agenda items to be introduced tonight were presented and discussed, including a detailed discussion regarding the following items. Ordinance number 15614, 82nd Street to I-170 Sanitary Relief. Staff discussed this unplanned supplemental appropriation to an existing project being constructed by J.H. Beara Construction Company. Staff is requesting initial $250,000 to complete construction. During the construction, MSD staff provided a redesigned sewer to accommodate a future upstream project. The redesign required the deepening of the sewer and the associated tunnel, which in turn increased the cost when unanticipated bedrock and mixed soil conditions were encountered. SAP requested this action to be introduced and adopted at tonight's meeting to allow for completion of the work and the expedited restoration of Olive Boulevard. Ordinance numbers 15616 to 15618. SAP provided details of three CSO volume reduction green infrastructure grants being awarded to reduce combined sewer overflows to the Mississippi River per the consent decree. SAP provided details of the grants being awarded at 3765 Lindell OZ LLC, City of St. Louis, and Mill Street Flats LLC for the construction of various volume reducing improvements on their properties. Ordinance number 15624, emergency repair number 065. SAP provided updated details on this emergency repair sewer project located adjacent to the district's Leemage Pump Station number one. The executive director declared the emergency and notified the board on October 26, 2020. The SAP refreshed the board on the issue and immediate concerns that could impact district operations in the event of a complete failure. SAP discussed in detail the current measures in place as well as the repair plan going forward. The supplemental funding request for the repairs, $2 million. The original appropriation, ordinance number 15569, for securing the site and stabilized the project was for $500,000. SAP is requesting introduction and adoption of this ordinance at tonight's meeting. Ordinance numbers 15625 to 15626, easement condemnation requests. SAP gave an update on the status of the easement acquisition on three parcels of ground for two projects on tonight's agenda. SAP continues to coordinate with the property owners but is seeking approval to move forward with condemnation efforts in order to keep these projects on schedule. The next committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for March 2nd, 2021. The meeting was adjourned at 8:07 a.m.
Thank you, trustee Evans. Do we have the committee report for the finance, trustee Fur?
Are we ready for the finance committee report?
Yes.
Okay. The finance committee met on February 2nd, 2021 with trustees Fair, Singer, Evans, Yates, Wabi, and Wilson in attendance. The minutes from the January 5th meeting were approved. The first item on the agenda was a staff request to exercise the fourth one-year renewal option with Clifton Larson Allen LLP for independent audit of all accounts and funds of the district. This will be resolution number 3638 on tonight's agenda. Next on the agenda was a report by staff relating to the district's operating fund portfolio as of January 29th, 2021. Staff indicated that the portfolio is in compliance with the district's investment policy. Staff then gave an update on the wastewater system revenue bond, series 2021A and 2021B. The bond issues total approximately 103 million with a financing rate of .78%, which is a record low. Lastly, staff announced that Secretary Treasurer Snoke and trustee Singer will further investigate last year's recommend by Aon to invest a portion of the district's pension funds in the Allianz GI Structured Alpha Global Equity 350 Fund. This matter will be discussed during a future committee meeting.
Thank you, trustee Fur. We have the stakeholders committee meeting report.
Yes. The Stakeholder Relations Committee met at district headquarters on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 at approximately 8:28 a.m.
Trustee Wabi?
You good?
Thank you.
Those present included Chairperson Wilson as well as district directors and staff. And attending and participating by video web call were trustee Evans, Fair, Singer, and Wabi. Chairperson Wilson called roll and had no further comments. And by motion of all trustees, approval of the minutes of the January 5th, 2021 stakeholder committee meeting minutes. The first agenda item was a discussion by Susan Meyer regarding an ordinance for legal consulting services pertaining to stormwater and wastewater rates issue. This is ordinance number 15627 on tonight's agenda. The meeting was then adjourned at approximately 8:25 a.m. by trustee Wilson. The next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. This concludes the Stakeholder Relations Committee board comments report.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Report of the executive director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. According to board rules, the terms of the current chair and vice chair will expire on Monday, March 15th. Therefore, at this, at the March meeting, at the end of that meeting, we will hold elections for the new chairman and vice chair. Those terms will be from March 16th, 2021 through March 15th, 2023. I will forward the process to the trustees in detail so they understand it. But in general, what will happen is for that two-year period, a trustee from the city is scheduled to be the chairman. So first, Secretary Treasurer Snoke will go through the process of having the county trustees nominate and elect a chairman for the next two years. And following that, he will have the trustees from the city nominate and elect a vice chairman for the next two years. Again, we plan right now on that being the last item in March. And also, again, I'll make sure I forward the details to all the board members well in advance in case you have any questions. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Director. I guess we'll get into the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The consent agenda tonight is items 10 through 19. Is there any board member who would like to pull an item for a separate vote? Hearing none, is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Wabi? I saw him talk, but I can't hear him.
Oh, let's get your speaker off. There you go.
Yeah. Yes, hi.
Thank you. Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
All right, we will move on to new business and we'll start with ordinances and items 20, which, item 20, which is the introduction and adoption of proposed ordinance number 15614. Making a supplemental appropriation of $250,000 from the sanitary replacement fund to be used for sanitary sewer construction in the 82nd Street to I-170 sanitary relief project in the cities of University City and Olivet, and authorizing the district to appropriate additional funds through a contract with J.H. Beara Construction Company. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Do I hear an objection to the suspension of the rule? Hearing none, is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Item 21 is the introduction proposal ordinance number 15615, making an appropriation of $3.1 million from the sanitary replacement fund to be used for sanitary sewer rehabilitation in the Bristol Coldwater Missouri Merrimack Public High Line Reduction Contract aid project in the cities of Baldwin, DePere, Ellisville, and Kirkwood, and authorizing the district under into a contract with SAC Construction. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 22, the introduction proposal ordinance number 15616, authorizing the district under into an agreement with 3765 Lindell OZ LLC for the cost sharing and for green infrastructure construction, the CSO volume reduction green infrastructure of 3765 Lindell Boulevard Project in the city of St. Louis. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Item 23, the introduction proposal ordinance number 15617, authorizing the district under interim agreement with the city of St. Louis for cost sharing for green infrastructure construction in the CSO volume reduction green infrastructure Louisiana Avenue Palm Street project in the city of St. Louis. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Item 24 is the introduction proposal ordinance number 15618, authorizing the district under interim agreement with Mill Creek Flats LLC for cost sharing for green infrastructure construction, the CSO volume reduction green infrastructure Mill Creek Flats project in the city of St. Louis. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Item 25 is the introduction proposal ordinance number 15619, making an appropriation of $60,000 from the sanitary replacement fund to be used for green infrastructure construction, the Meline Creek CSO BP 051 and 052 local storage facility project in the city of St. Louis, and authorizing the district under into a contract with DJM Ecological Services. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 26, the introduction proposal ordinance number 15620, making an appropriation of $1.35 million from the sanitary replacement fund to use for sanitary sewer construction in the Midland Sanitary Relief Project in the city of Overland, and authorizing the district to enter into a contract with Kolbe Grading. Is there a motion for introduction?
Wait, can I ask a question? Why is there an asterisk on 26? Is that just a typo?
It's because I intend to abstain.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Was there a motion for introduction?
So move.
In a second. Thank you. Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Abstain.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 27 is the introduction proposal ordinance number 15621, making an appropriation of $5 million from the sanitary replacement fund to be used for pump station improvements in the Watkins Creek Pump Station Replacement Project in the city of St. Louis. Excuse me, and authorizing the district under into a contract with Plucker Construction Company. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move.
So move.
I will take that as a second. Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Item 28 is the introduction proposal ordinance number 15622, making an appropriation of $110,000 from a district-wide stormwater fund to be used for storm sewer construction in Nottingham Estates Drive, 5217 Storm Sewer Project, and unincorporated St. Louis County, and authorizing the district under into a contract with Taylor Made Construction Company. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Item 29, introduction proposal ordinance number 15623, making an appropriation of $110,000 from the Operation Maintenance Construction and Improvement Fund of Graveway Creek to be used for storm sewer construction in the St. Simon Court 10023 Storm Channel Project and unincorporated St. Louis County, and authorizing the district center into a contract with Kelp Contracting. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 30 is introduction and adoption of proposed ordinance number 15624, making a supplemental appropriation of $2 million from the emergency fund to be used for emergency repair in the Emergency Repair 65 project in the city of St. Louis, and authorizing the district to appropriate additional funds through a contract with KCI Construction Company. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Do I hear an objection to the suspension of the rule? Hearing none, is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 31, the introduction proposal ordinance number 15625, declaring the necessity for the acquisition of easements and temporary easements in certain real property within the district for the purpose of construction of sewers and related appurtenances in the project known as Bellevue Avenue 1600 to 1618 Lateral Sewer in the city of Richmond Heights to serve the needs of residents of the area and authorizing staff to proceed with further condemnation efforts related to the project. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Item 32 is the introduction proposal ordinance number 15626, declaring the necessity for the acquisition of easements and temporary easements in certain real property within the district for the purpose of construction of sewers and related appurtenances in the project known as South Broadway at Merrimack Combined Sewer Replacement in the city of St. Louis to serve the needs of residents of the area and authorizing staff to proceed with further condemnation efforts related to the project. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 33 is the introduction proposal ordinance number 15627, authorizing the district under into a contract with Shan's, Albert, John, Lacus, and Giljam to provide legal consulting services on matters involving stormwater and wastewater rate consulting and associated regulations and policies. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
All right, item 34 is an introduction and adoption. This is a new emergency repair that's come up since the committee meeting. So before we go to introduction, I'm gonna ask Rich Unreferto to please explain the project.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, trustees. The project that we're requesting introduction and adoption tonight is referred to as Emergency Repair 066. About a week ago from tonight, the district was made aware of a cave-in in the street at the intersection of Idaho and Blow Street. This is in South City. Just to give it some perspective, it's basically just east of I-55 and just south of the Lothborough. It is actually located in the off-ramp, the northbound off-ramp to I-55 onto Lothborough. So once we discovered and were made aware of it, the area was barricaded. We contacted Missouri Department of Transportation. They immediately closed down that off-ramp to allow us to proceed with the work was necessary. And then Friday, staff was able to get in there and take a look at what was the issue. And we found that there were two sewers collapsed. In addition, a manhole had also lowered itself. The flow in the sewers was still going through, so there was no bypass pumping necessary. The sewers in this location are located about 30 feet deep, so it's gonna be a very extensive repair. And so staff then approached executive director to declare it an emergency, and we proceeded in that manner. The work to be done, we're asking for the appropriation of funding and authorizing the staff to enter to emergency construction contact, contract with Understall Construction. The work will replace approximately 10 feet of 24-inch combined sewer and 45 feet of 12-inch diameter combined sewers and an additional structure to be repaired in that area. Again, the repair is about 30 feet deep. The contractor has, was mobilized on Monday, and excavation has started. We anticipate this to take one to two weeks. Obviously, with winter that we have, we'll get it, the hole closed up, and hopefully get the off-ramp open, and then come back later in the spring and, and close up, be able to asphalt over and get things back, back to normal. But our priority is to get the sewers fixed and the street back open. So we're requesting this item. So, Rich, I had a question. Does this have anything to do with that other emergency that we discussed at the committee meeting around the River DePere? No, it does not. This is a brand-new emergency. Is in the same general area or? Our, our plant, this is south of the River DePere. If you keep going up north on 55, you'll, you'll capture River DePere. And we're just in that vicinity more to the north of this. All right. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So how, I understand this is an emergency. Just out of, just for my own curiosity, how do you select contractors in an, in an emergency situation?
Our, our, all of our contractors are pre-qualified for certain types of work. And we have a listing of contractors that are pre-qualified for what we call deep sewer. In other words, they're, they have the equipment and the manpower and the capability to mobilize and make a repair to a deep sewer for, and they also bid on those types of project. So we typically will approach those contractors during our pre-qualification to see if there's an interest in them answering to an emergency should we reach one. We currently have five deep sewer contractors, and then we rotate those. We go from one to the next to the next. So that's how we do it. And then the work commences on a time and material type contract. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you.
Right, are there any other questions for Rich? All right, so item 34, again, is an introduction and adoption. This is appropriating $750,000 from, from the emergency fund to be used for emergency repair in the Emergency Repair 66 project in the city of St. Louis. It will authorize the district to enter into an emergency construction contract with Understall Contracting. Is there a motion for introduction?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Do I hear an objection to the suspension of the rule? Hearing none, is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to resolutions. First resolution is item 35, the adoption of resolution 3631, expressing the board of trustees appreciation to Keith R. Bailey for his 39 years of exemplary service to the district from May 18th, 1981 to his retirement effective February 1st, 2021. Is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 36, the adoption of resolution 3632, expressing the board of trustees appreciation to Daniel H. Bowler for his 27 years of exemplary service to the district from July 19th, 1993 to his retirement effective February 1st, 2021. Is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 37 is the adoption of resolution 3633, expressing the board of trustees appreciation to Deborah Carter for her seven years of exemplary service to the district from May 13th, 2013 to her retirement effective February 1st, 2021. Is there a motion for adoption?
So move.
So move.
Thank you. We'll take that as a second. Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Item 38 is the adoption of resolution 3634, expressing the board of trustees appreciation to David R. Hirsch for his 28 years of exemplary service to the district from February 3rd, 1992 to his retirement effective February 1st, 2021. Is there a motion for adoption?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 39 is the adoption of resolution 3635, expressing the board of trustees appreciation to Daryl J. Lenz for his 14 years of exemplary service to the district from October 2nd, 2006 to his retirement effective February 1st, 2021. Is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 40 is the adoption of resolution 3636, expressing the board of trustees appreciation to Reed D. Lowery for his 40 years of exemplary service to the district from July 7th, 1980 to his retirement effective February 1st, 2021. Is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?
Hi.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Item 41, the adoption of resolution 3636, expressing the board of trustees appreciation to Mark A. Opely for his 37 years of exemplary service to the district from July 18th, 1983 to his retirement effective February 1st, 2021. Is there a motion for adoption?
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Hi.
Ms. Fair?